Exchange program and safe school zones.
So this was the topic that was in the last agenda item. And Peter Wright, CEO of Valley Regional Hospital, and Mark Chase, place chief of health to be at Claremont are both here this evening with some of their colleagues to talk about this particular agenda item in their request. Come on up to the podium, please.
And thank you for being with us.
My pleasure.
My name is Pete Wright. I'm the president and CEO of Valley Regional Healthcare. I've had the great pleasure to hold that position since March of 2013. Before that, I worked up in the North Country at Littleton Hospital and then over in Vermont. So I think I've done enough time in small rural communities to understand the value of the partnership between the healthcare provider and the school board. I want to say I met with the superintendent, assistant superintendent, a few weeks ago, and I was very encouraged about our ability to carry on what I would characterize as an extremely strong relationship in the five and a half years that I've been here and discuss possibilities about how we can continue to work together. This is one of those opportunities. I had a kind of a pace of how I wanted to walk the board through the program, but I think I want to shelve that because my understanding of the last meeting is there were a lot of questions. And rather than tell you about a lot of information that may not be relevant to what you're considering as you ponder this discussion, I'd rather give you the information that you're looking for in order to make a good decision. Does that sound okay?
Sounds good.
I think one of the things to get started is to remember that our mission and our values are exactly the same. At the end of the day, our mission at Valley Regional Healthcare is the health and well-being of the citizens of Sullivan County. And that includes Claremont. And that includes particularly our long and valued neighbors at Littleton Hospital. So I just want to keep that in mind as we have our discussion. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Jason?
So I had a chance to look through the attachments that were emailed over to us about Project 439 that happened, was it in 2016? No? 2017? Was it last year or two years ago?
I think it was six... It was last year? Okay, it was 2017.
So one of the things that stuck out to me, and perhaps I'm just oversimplifying this, and if I am, just let me know. I look at the number of needles, clean needles distributed, and it was 1,760. And I look at the number of needles collected, and it's 329. So to me, it's sort of misleading. You collected 20% of what you gave out. So when I think of needle exchange, my thought is, is if I'm giving one out, I'm getting one taken back. So I think a lot of people, when they're being sold the idea of needle exchange, one of the things they're thinking about is, well, that's going to take needles off of the sidewalks, and it's going to take needles off of when my kids are walking down through the park. If only 20% of them are getting taken in, where are the rest going? And should it be called something else? Because it's very lopsided. How many are being given out for what you guys are taking in?
I'm afraid I can't answer that question. So when the project started in 2017, it didn't include Valley Regional. It was at a different location, but it was hosted by the folks at Dartmouth and through the College of Medicine. I don't know if you're able to, Ashley? Do you want to speak to that?
Ashley Greenfield, greater Sullivan County Public Health Network. I want to bring Laura up, want to address the question of why we call it a syringe exchange program. I think there are a couple of different names for syringe exchange programs, syringe access programs, syringe service programs, to kind of demystify the kind of types of exchange, if you will, that one-to-one kind of notion. Laura is the best person to do that. I think the other thing that I just want to know in the data that you've received that was for less than six months, so it's a very short, very small sample of data that you guys are looking at, so just some thoughts about that. So do you want to come up? Great.
Hi, I'm Laura Byrne, and I'm actually with the HIV/ HCV Resource Center. I know it was incorrectly written in the notes, it's Dartmouth Hitchcock. I'm working with Project 439, which is volunteer Geisel medical students to form a syringe exchange, hopefully in Claremont. But, so we actually call our program Syringe Service Program, and we don't have a one-for-one exchange policy. Some syringe service programs do have a one-for-one exchange policy, but there's a lot of research that indicates that if you don't, the needles get dispersed to people that need them, that need clean needles, that won't come into syringe exchanges. And we're trying to get our needles to those people so they don't share needles and other injection equipment. But we really see our program more as a way to get people in for services. And we don't have an enormous, we don't have a one-for-one policy. Sometimes we have, we have people that regularly bring their needles back. We have people that do not bring their needles back. And I give out, we have three sizes of Sharps containers, really secure, heavy plastic Sharps containers that we give clients so they can transport their needles. Clients are always encouraged to dispose properly of needles. Our program's in Vermont, and the Vermont law is that you can actually put needles in a very hard plastic container if you seal the top and write "do not recycle" on it and dispose of them in a landfill even. And I think that's what some people do. But generally, I would say our clients are very careful about their needle disposal when they don't bring them back. But we absolutely encourage clients to bring their needles back.
Steve and then Michelle.
I think the more concerning fact is while we are looking at a limited scope, 1,700 needles went back out on the street, 330 were taken back, but only two clients were, you know, delivered substance misuse treatment services. Referred to substance misuse treatment services too. But we handed out 26 naloxone kits.
That's actually not a lot of needles that people, a lot of, some people inject five times a day, and so needles build up. It seems like a lot, you know, but it's actually not that many. And we always refer people to services. Sometimes people aren't ready for treatment services, and we really feel strongly that we should catch those people and get them help, get them in, you know, just the very aspect of coming into a medical center. So our programs are now at Good Neighbor Health Clinic in White River and the Springfield Health Center, both serving underserved populations and more or less free clinics. And we've got, we've been able to get people in and get medical care there. People come in with abscesses, and they can be treated by the volunteer physicians on site at Good Neighbor. I had somebody come in yesterday to our exchange who got a vaccine, the first series, for hepatitis A and B. So it's really about getting people in first. And Project 439 unfortunately wasn't open very long. So they didn't really have that long-term chance to establish long-term relationships with people. But I can say that for, we do a lot of referrals. We've gotten a lot of people into treatment. A lot of people that we used to see aren't currently in treatment. And I know because I give talks at the rehabs, and I can go and I can see the former clients there. And I also, since I'm standing here, I wanted to just invite you, or some of you, maybe not everybody, to come to our program in White River. My clients are very receptive to visitors. We have visitors sometimes. And I just think if you're on the fence or you're concerned about what a syringe exchange actually looks like, please let me know and come up and visit during one of our syringe exchange days, maybe one person at a time or two. But, because I think in that, you would see the interaction and the way we're able to help people. And I also wanted to mention that Dana Nicolovich, who's the executive director of Good Neighbor Health Clinic, would be happy to talk to anybody on the board about what it, from her perspective, what it's been like hosting a syringe exchange program onsite since 2006.
Mr. Chairman, if I could expand on that just very briefly. So the whole purpose of holding it a healthcare facility is to ensure, one, privacy. So if someone's carrying a biohazard red box into the soup kitchen, hey, we know what that is and we know why you're there. If you're carrying it in the front door of the hospital, we have diabetics carry that stuff in every single day. The anonymity is really very, very important. The National Institute of Health did some randomized controlled trials about public needle exchanges or needle programs at healthcare facilities versus in the community. And the healthcare facility, you know, improves the performance of the program every time. One of the things that Laura pointed out is really, really important. This isn't a, hey, we're open, one day we're going to take 10 and get 10. It's about building relationships. You're talking about a population that does not trust very many people, if anybody at all. And so the duration of the program is key to its success. I also know that some of those needles that are out there that you're worried about, I had a phone call with the superintendent earlier this week about his concern about needles that exist today on the school campuses. One of the reasons we want to do this is nobody is better at handling and disposing of these materials than we are. Should we launch this program, I absolutely pledge to work with the school districts to make sure that our staff figure out how to make the school grounds a safer place to be. I think that's a key component. Because you're right, we're not going to get them all off the street. If we get 5 or 10% off the street, I would consider that a success. That's 5 or 10% that weren't there before. But we can't stop there. We have to continue. We have to continue the effort. We have to continue to enhance our relationship about keeping the kids safe. And this is just one component of it.
Can I just add a follow-up?
Just a quick follow-up?
Yeah.
My quick follow-up is in regards to if diabetics can come in and dispose of syringes with you, can drug users come in and dispose of syringes with you as it stands currently today?
No, because diabetics are coming in for diabetic treatment.
Okay, that's, I just want clarification.
Yeah, there's a clarity about the reason for the visit. They're coming in for a visit. It's a paid...
I just wanted to make sure that I was clear that it wasn't, they were just coming in with their Sharp containers and here you go.
If they could do that, we wouldn't, I wouldn't be standing here.
So, two questions. The first one is if you are able to launch the program, which I'm understanding is that Valley Regional would become a needle exchange program, and would you pass out the red box, hazard boxes, when you pass out your needles? And the reason why I ask that is because it sounds like, you know, it would be interesting and probably a little bit more proactive to have them have those boxes and to bring them back when they exchange. And then, you know, I think the count of obviously the needles will go up. And secondly, basically, you're here to ask us if we will give permission for you to do a program that's 1,000 feet from a school, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. So the answer to your question is, it's not just Valley Regional. This is a partnership with Laura, the Geisel School. Valley Regional agrees to host the site as a safe facility, but we don't staff it. We work with the public health network and the partners in the program to be able to provide the syringes, provide the facility, the safe facility, and facilitate the disposal. But it's not a program that we own on our own. The second part to your question is, yes, we're asking permission. Until the law was passed, until the amendment to the law was passed, this was banned in school districts, period. I work directly with the New Hampshire Hospital Association for this program and the Senate Education Committee. And the solution that I put out to them is, don't make this a statewide decision. Allow us to make local decisions. Keep decisions local. Allow us to enhance our partnership. So if we have a good relationship with the school and we have trust, we should be able to facilitate that program. If that doesn't exist in other communities, they can't, they can't take advantage of it.
Will you also be providing, will they be providing Narcan kits?
I think it's naloxone, right? Yeah.
I just want to be super frank and upfront right from the get-go. And I think I mentioned this last time, people came that I have a cousin who's a heroin addict. So I feel like you're explaining all of this to me, and I understand a million percent. And I understand the reasoning. I understand how helpful it is. I understand the validity of it. And I personally agree with everything that you guys want to do. What I struggle with and I'm uncomfortable with is it being so close to a school. And I know that the chances of anything bad happening to the students or staff or anybody are slim to none, but I still feel extremely uncomfortable with that.
I totally understand. If you knew what happened in our emergency department outside in our parking lot every single day, this would be the least of your worries. Our responsibility is to keep the kids safe. To be candid, I'm glad we can be frank and candid. In my opinion, if we don't pass this, we're putting the kids at greater risk than if we did pass it. We will get some of it, we will get some of it off the streets. I will commit to working with the superintendent to figure out how to clean up the rest of the playgrounds. It's a package deal. I absolutely don't want to just say we're one and done.
So board members, be patient. We're going to, everybody even hasn't had a chance to ask one question yet, so I'm not going to triple dip on other people that haven't said anything yet. Thank you. I see Chief Chase here. And I know one of the, one of the concerns that I've heard in the past, and hopefully he can help, be this is fact or fiction, that this would introduce a criminal element that we don't already have into a school zone.
You know, Claremont's not alone. This is an epidemic in the country. We know that. We see it on MUR, we see it on the news, we see it in the paper. So this isn't a Claremont problem. And to think that only the people that are walking and going by the school and throwing needles down, that's not the customer base I think that this program is hoping to get. There's addicts all over the community, all over the state, all over the county that would be driving. They're not all just walking by the school that's in close proximity. My belief on this, this is all about harm reduction. I know I'm in enforcement, so I'm looking for crimes and take it away. When I started law enforcement, just having possession of a mere needle was a felony. Just one needle. The legislator, legislation has decided that we need this as a state. And I carry Sharps containers in every cruiser. That didn't exist five, six years ago. We have to do that now. Any little bit we can to help these people that are facing this addiction, I think we need to take the step forward. I know it's, I know it's a tough decision. And Claremont's community, our general makeup of this community where there's a school, you know, our school, safe school zones in Claremont are really unique, you know? Where you go to another community where they have three schools, but they're scattered, they're touching each other. So that's what makes this very unique. My position is if it's anywhere, it should be at the hospital. And like Peter said, we're up there all the time. A lot of the people that are going to use this program are already up there for different events in their life, in their family's life. So I, I support it.
The folks that will engage with this program and that will come are the folks who are, you know, have a conscience and are trying to do something good. We're not going to address the folks who don't care. And there are people out there who don't care, and it's, you know, over their shoulder and away we go. Those aren't the people that are coming in the door. The people that are coming in the door are going, now what do I do? I don't want to throw this on the ground. But confronted with throwing it on the ground or running into someone from law enforcement or someone that they know sees them with a needle, they're going to throw it on the ground, and they do. So we're just trying to provide an opportunity for, I don't know what, I don't know if it's tiny or small or medium, but there's a part of the population that wants to try to do the right thing in terms of this needle disposal, and we just want to provide them the avenue to do it.
So Jason, you haven't asked anything, and I don't think Mike has either.
I certainly understand our issues in this town and other towns all over the state. And I understand the validity of what you're saying. I think I'd feel more comfortable approving this if I knew that this was something that would be guaranteed to be done after hours, after schools were done, you know, 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night. If that was something that might work, that's, I think it would be a little more acceptable. You know, I think a lot of people have concerns about it happening at 10, 11 o'clock in the morning when...
The proposed hours right now are 3:30 to 5:30, two days a week, approximately. So not kind of after dark, per se, but certainly, I think, after the school hours. And, you know...
So I guess part of my concern is that, you know, knowing Valley Regional is a responsible hospital and program, I guess my concern is that opening this door for you, for this program, why do we open the door for other programs that may not carry your commitment to responsibility, your commitment to this community? So if we open the program, open the door for you to come into the drug-free school zone, and then a month from now we have another program that some guy from California wants to do a needle exchange down by the bluff, you know, I just, that's one of my concerns.
Yeah, it's a very good question. When we worked with the legislature, we were very specific to say healthcare facility. So the only thing that the Safe School Act allows today is with board approval, and it's not a, once you approve one, you have to approve all the limits. And each and individual decision for each program has to be at a healthcare facility. So in Claremont, we own all of the healthcare facilities bar three, I think. You know, there's dermatology practice, I think you're pretty safe there. Kiwi Family Practice, primary care, they could open one, I suppose. I don't think that's in Jim's plan. And then there are a variety of private practices on our campus across the street. There's EMT, there's dentists. I mean, healthcare facility is probably a little bit broad. But they don't just get permission. They have to come to you for that reason. And, you know, I would be here saying, look, we've got a program. It's at the hospital. It's the safest place. I'm not sure that we need another program in another area. I wouldn't want to do anything that's going to, there's a lot of effort and resources and money going to be spent to bring this to the community. I wouldn't support anything that's going to dilute that effort because it's more than just a repository, right? You heard Laura talk about it's a relationship. We're trying to create a safe place for people to come. There's CDC studies that show, you know, the referrals into treatment. It takes a lot longer than six months to build up that trust to get people into treatment. And as we grow the services, the other thing that's absolutely coming to a hospital campus near you are expanded substance abuse disorder services. We're looking very hard at residential substance abuse. We're looking hard at all these different programs because we need them. It's not a crisis anymore. It's an epidemic.
I'd also like to see a solid plan with hours, you know, why not weekend hours, Saturday with school-studded sessions? So, you know, I don't know.
Our concern, you know, as long as my facility is open and the area that we're going to choose is open, they're welcome. The team knows that. I think it has a lot to do with when the medical students are available and what evidence and research they have about what's the most effective day and time. But I'm fine with the weekend. Doesn't bother me. I'm happy to kind of work with them and, you know, if you give your approval to this, we'll come back and say, you said you wanted it, you know, not while school's in session, so we're going to do it at this time. Do you think there's some support for the weekend? So we'll take a look at that. There's definitely a need for it during the week as well. I wouldn't tell you we would do it exclusively on the weekend because I don't think it would be as successful as if you have it one or both times.
Carolyn?
My comment was, part of it was, Mike covered it, but my second part of that was the reporting back to us as to what the numbers were or the follow-through and what that time limit might be. I think quarterly would be overdoing it, but certainly I'd like some sort of a reporting back to us.
Unless there's something preventing us, I don't see why we wouldn't produce at least an annual report so that you can get some accurate statistics.
I'd like a little bit more in the beginning.
The state of New Hampshire requires quarterly and monthly reporting.
Okay.
That is submitted to DHHS.
Okay. That answered my question.
Michelle?
Okay. Having a daughter who is a recovering heroin addict and knowing the need for needle exchange programs here in Claremont, I'd like to make a motion to accept the needle exchange program. I heard nothing but positive from this. There is, there are times where 3:30 to 5:30 and possible weekends, correct? And therefore, it's not even, you know, school is out before 3:30, especially Duznerd. Duznerd is just like any, all bluff. They're out. And the difference, and the letter from Mayor Lovett encouraging us also is, it's really important, a lot of people are not going to understand this because they're not there or they haven't been there. So it's hard to put, it's hard to get something sometimes, like this is so important. However, if you haven't been in the situation or dealt with someone in the situation, then you're going to be more hesitant.
Michelle, I'm going to cut you there because we made a motion.
Right. So I'd like to make a motion to accept this.
Would you second? Can the chair second?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Further discussion?
I feel like I would be more open to this if, like Mike said, we could see something that would say it were after-school hours and that would need to be coordinated with the principal of the school because there are after-school programs that happen and events that happen at the school. And I would definitely be more open-minded to the weekends, but I still feel like I just, I mean, if there could be a coordinated effort for this program to happen, which I agree with, to happen when children are not at school or parents and children after school, then I would be more open-minded, I feel like, to it if there were a plan for something like that.
Happy to make sure that the hours are after the bell rings at Duznerd.
I'm going to go right down the row here, so...
I guess to Rebecca's point, I'd be more open to this if it were a hard schedule of, you know, knowing which days and when. And also wondering if it, if we could state it as a trial period. We've got to hear back, you know, see how it goes for a year, and then report back.
I'm not sure how the law's written, but I'm, like I said in the beginning, we have a partnership, and I don't look at that partnership as transactional. So we always want to make sure that we're in touch, and if there's worries that you have about the program, then there are worries that I have about the program. And I'd be more than happy to come back in front of the board at your wish to answer questions, to update on statistics, to talk about how the program's going. We will have a hard and fast schedule. I don't have it today because we're trying to get permission from the program, but as soon as we move it forward, we will make sure that the superintendent's office has the hard and fast schedule, that it comes after school hours, and that that is distributed to you.
I think Carolyn is next.
I am acceptable to the motion with conditions. And we both, if you add on the specific hours is one condition. The other one, reporting whatever that quarterly or annually reporting is.
It's every week, quarterly.
I would be acceptable for that motion, as long as it carried the conditions.
Steve, did you have something?
Well, I just, at the end of the day, I kind of find this whole request disrespectful to the students and the children of Claremont and the families and parents and taxpayers to put this in the hospital right next to an elementary school. And I think it, while the program idea is novel, why couldn't we consider putting it in the Newport Health Center that's a medical facility, not next to a school? Common sense approach.
Because those people can't get there.
Can I respond to that?
Of course, yeah.
If you put it in Newport, it won't help Claremont. Plain and simple. There's going to be no travel. They don't, they don't travel for medical appointments, and that's more important than this, arguably. I understand, I didn't create the program. When the program started in 2017, it wasn't at the hospital. I have a map in my office of the city with all the school districts and the boundaries you have to have. We spent months trying to find a place, and it just didn't work. So I wasn't out there saying, hey, I want to drive this program forward, let me have it. I'm bringing it forward because we need to have it in the community. And it would appear that we're the only facility that is both trained and equipped to have it, to do it safely. We have the relationships with the school, so, you know, whatever we decide today, I promise you at some point down the road, we're going to have to move and shift. We're going to learn things. You're going to say, we didn't know that before. Can we do this? And our answer is, how many times can we say yes? Well, we have to say no, right? We want to make this program work, right? We want to make the community healthier and safer. That's what this is all about. So if I thought it would work at the Newport Health Center, believe me, I have an office there. I'd set it up there. That's going to help Newport probably, but it won't help Claremont.
I find it to be very contradictory, the information you're providing.
I find it to be very contradictory, the information you're providing, because we heard last meeting that people travel from Claremont to Springfield and White River to seek treatment. I've heard tonight that the people that were looking to get into this program are the people who want to change. If they truly want to change and not just get back a needle to go back on their drugs, they will drive just that seven minutes down the road to the Newport Health Center.
So, Mr. Horsky, I'd like to address this. So we're also having these conversations with the town of Newport. And they've asked that we continue to have conversations with Claremont as well. There's a limited amount of space in the Newport Health Center. And basically, what they did is they built it and then said, we've now got a waiting list for folks who want to provide services at the Newport Health Center. And unfortunately, right now, because we're in a new, this is a new-ish thought, we're at the bottom of that list. And there are a lot of services ahead of that. But we're having and continue to have conversations with the town manager, the manager of the Newport Health Center, New London Hospital. We're having these very same conversations with them as well.
And allow me to clear up. So there are certainly people who will travel to do the right thing. I didn't mean to say there weren't. But those people are traveling to do the right thing. But what we're hoping to do is to provide a venue for the people who can, right? There's, if you're not, I'm sure you must be familiar, or if you're not familiar, the transportation issues of people in this particular category, people seeking healthcare, are an enormous issue all on their own, that we're working with another group to try to figure out how to address. But we have people who can't get to the hospital for a hospital visit when they're sick. So it is both. And so I apologize if anything I said caused that to be confusing.
I mean, I'm just kind of going off the basis, too. I mean, while we're talking about the hospital, I mean, I was there last Thursday late for a meeting, and we're concerned about getting this program put in place. But I was at the hospital from 2:30 in the afternoon and didn't leave until 7 o'clock, being late for the meeting, because our own hospital right now can't handle the amount of people coming into the ED, the urgent care center. And now we want to add another task on and another problem in. And we're already having enough problems serving the community as it is. I'm just, I'm baffled, I guess, but I-
Sure, that makes sense, but this is a different stat. So I would tell you, sure, there's times where my emergency department is, I've got every bed full and I got 10 backed up in the waiting room and an ambulance on the way. It happens at a very specific period of time. What I can tell you, we're not going to do is schedule this when I know, if we decide to run this out of the urgent care, when I know urgent care is full, or when I know ED's full. It's pretty predictable. I can tell you, you know, for example, Monday morning at 8 o'clock, not a good time to come to the hospital, right? Every single Monday, or this week it was Tuesday. It just, it's predictable. And so you're right, we would never want to program something when our resources are already stretched.
The, one of the, I heard you use the word "safe and healthy." And one of my things I observe is the not, what I call the "not in my backyard" syndrome. And we talk about solar energy and wind energy, and everybody believes that those are safe and healthy alternatives, but not in my backyard. And this is another one of those programs that this is, there's no question it serves the greater good. It's approved by the state. There are some concerns. I'm going to reiterate that I think that many of the clients are not evil people that are coming in from Lawrence, Massachusetts or somewhere. I think that they are the parents and the extended families of the students in our schools. I believe that. So I just think that we need to be wary of the "not in my backyard."
Absolutely. You said something I think was very important. This enemy that we're fighting cuts across every socio-economic dynamic. There are Ivy League graduates who have this problem. There are people who make very high six-figure salaries who have this problem. This is not a problem of the poor. This is not a problem of the uneducated. It is the problem of every element of society and every community in every state across this country.
So we're going to wrap it up. The last two comments.
Okay. I think that's a good point, Frank. It's not necessarily for me a matter of the backyard. It's a matter of the time, of when it's in my backyard. So I would like to ask Ms. Lewis if it's okay. Are there after-school programs that go on at the Diznar School?
Yes.
What time do they usually wrap up?
There's one after-school program that-
Melissa, sorry, you know that.
There's one after-school program run by Green Mountain Children's Center that is there until 6 o'clock at night or earlier if students are picked up sooner than that.
So I would be in favor, I would be inclined to approve this if it were happening after programs were done at the school. So 3:30 is too early, in my opinion. There's still going to be kids there.
What I think perhaps, I would hope maybe will make you feel better, is part of this certainly should be coordination with CPD. And if we could coordinate with the chief to make sure there's enhanced patrol and police presence during the hours, you know, in and around the school, right? I mean, it's not just, I doubt that there's anything nefarious happening inside the school or maybe in the immediate parking lot, but we all know that trail and the wooded area. And so I think that we can work with the chief to make sure that when the program is open, that there's presence and we make a deliberate effort to enhance the safety for the kids.
And we partner with the hospital all the time for various different events. This is not, this is not going to be a new partnership that we have to create to create this right here. We're on board with Peter and his facilities.
Michelle, that's, I'm going to have to wrap up. Right, Michelle.
So two questions. Number one, is that, Melissa, is that after-school program every day of the week?
It is Monday through Friday.
It is. And so my other question is-
Okay, I'd like to bring this to a vote. Mrs. Woodman, I'd like to do a roll call vote on this, please.
Now, we have a motion with conditions read, as to what those conditions are.
Not amended.
Nobody amended it. That was all the discussion phase.
All right.
Yes.
Steven Horsky?
No.
Michael Peachon?
Yes.
Cheryl Pierce?
Yes.
Frank Sprague?
Yes.
Carolyn Toll?
Yes.
Becca Zula?
No.
To clarify, that motion was never amended to have scheduling stuff, correct? That I just-
Right. If it were, I would change the vote.
So that's five yes and two no's.
I just want to make it said that I made that vote taking your word for doing what you said you were going to do.
I have every confidence, they will.
Thank you so much.
I would just hope that you guys would be able to communicate with the principal of the school and the staff of the school, because I haven't really heard any mention of that. I've heard you guys share your intentions and the collaboration between the Claremont School District. But I'd like to see conversations happen with the school, staff and principal.
I have every intention to partner with the school, make sure this program is functional and works for the long term.
Bring it.
Thank you.
Well, this issue is certainly a tough one. I think what's most important, at least for me, is that we're having a conversation between multiple agencies here in Claremont about helping this community, perhaps stretching our resources so that we reach more people. I appreciate what Peter has offered us. We're talking about perhaps sharing professional development. His largest cohort is nurses. Well, we have some of those, too. And they're good people. You know, Mark provides us-